I shall call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we shall have rule call, please, Carolina.
Council member, go ahead. Yes, follow me. Miller?
Yes.
Or else?
Yes.
Mayor Woolers.
Yes. Well, greetings, everyone. We shall start tonight's meeting with Mayor Woolers' quote for the day. Once again, I'm gonna pull a quote from Mr. Jim Rowan. If you don't know him, he's an American entrepreneur, author, motivational speaker. Here's what he has to say today. You cannot make progress without making decisions. Okay, we shall move on to approval of tonight's agenda. I'll entertain any additions or corrections, and if there are none, a motion to approve.
I will move approval of the agenda as listed.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, next item up is our citizens' comments portion, and of course, just a reminder to everyone for the citizens' comments portion, just a few rules, housekeeping rules. We try to keep your comments to that two to three time limit, and the only exception for that tonight will be Jim Morrison. So, he's got a PowerPoint presentation he wants to share with us, so we'll entertain that. As we don't have a lot of things on the agenda tonight, I thought it would be appropriate. He went to a lot of hard work, and I think it's only fair to hear what he has to say or what that PowerPoint has to say for us. So that being said, we'll start out. Mary Elizabeth, go ahead.
Hello, my name's Dr. Bazanson. I live at 207 East Eighth Street. And the last time I was here, I talked about why maybe addresses aren't important, and I realized I don't know where any of you live, except for Kevin. So I didn't know if you were willing to share your addresses. I see. All right, well, I think there's a reasonable explanation for that. Second thing, I have a feeling the council is moving towards paying $10,000 in order to have the election around the ordinance. That's $10,000 of my money. I'd like to know what pocket that is coming out of. I want to know how we're paying for that. I appreciate it, and won't know till June 10th, if that. Three, and this is easily solved. If you look on the City of Morris website, if you go to the city manager page, there's a button that says budget. The budget has not been updated since 2021. Blaine Hill was the last person who signed a budget that was submitted on the webpage. I thought maybe that could be corrected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth.
You're welcome. I'm on to three minutes. Hello.
Okay, next, we have a PowerPoint presentation from Jim.
Great. See if I can get the technology to work here. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Jim Morrison. I'm a Morris native. I'm still a frequent visitor, an occasional resident, probably about a third of the year. I became involved in St. Eastside Park movement after I heard about it from my mother, but then I saw some Facebook posts, and ultimately, I'm the one who drafted the proposed ordinance that was circulated. As you know, the council has three options in response to the proposed ordinance. It can accept the ordinance, it can reject the ordinance and send it to the voters, or it can try to reach a compromise with the sponsors. And I think the reason everyone's here tonight is that, at least by my calculations, this is the last chance to try to do that third option of a compromise. In order to make any substantial change to the ordinance, the council has to be able to identify that change and provide three days' notice, which, three days ends up with publication basically being, you can only get it by next council meeting. And so then, that next council meeting is the last one before the deadline. So, what we're looking for tonight is that either you'll put one of those amendments or several of the amendments on the agenda for the last meeting, or you won't. And, you know, this is sort of your time to make that decision of whether any of these compromises is something you want to consider and you want the public to comment on. So, I know I'm here to present one. I think some of the others are here to present some, and I'm sort of here to back them up and do any explanation that might be needed. And frankly, if I hear from you all that we sure have an idea, but it's not drafted, well, I'm here to try to see if that can happen. And for that matter, I'm here to answer any questions that might raise. So, I first want to just quick sort of overview the original ordinance, just so everyone is on the same page. It has these five sections. First section is just sort of the general goal of the ordinance. It doesn't really do anything. The second section is this thing that says, well, 95% of the existing space. And that doesn't mean it has to be 95% green. It means that 95% of what's existing now, and that ultimately gives you 3,521 square feet to work with. That's about the size of, right over here, that plain area there on California and south. Third is our grandfather clause. That's if you use up all your space. That's to help you say, well, you can still maintain everything, you can still move things around, you're not hampered even if you use up all the space. But the key thing to remember on this is you don't even have to look at this clause if you've still got your space. Last is enforcement. I think this is the one maybe has caused the most sort of confusion out there. You know, I think ultimately, you have to remember, anytime you have a law, laws can get enforced, there's a way to do it. And what this really does is it answers a few questions. So, one is, who can get into court? And that is, you need five people, not just one, like normal. They need to be Morris residents, not just anyone aggrieved like normal, and they can be any five. It's not like a special privilege that the sponsors have. Finally, it's what can they ask for? So they can ask for what's called declaratory relief. That's saying, you go to a court and you say, "Court, tell us what the law is, we've got some confusion about it." You can go there for injunctive relief. That's where you go to the court and you say, "Court, stop them from doing this thing they say they're gonna do that wouldn't follow the law." What someone can't do under this ordinance is ask for money damages. You know, I heard Russ say, "Well, I'm worried I'm gonna get sued." Well, there's no point in suing Russ, that's not gonna be part of this. And finally, the last part, I'm not even gonna talk about, it's just kind of lawyers, legalese. I think where we're at here now matters. So, what if something comes along, right? I'm not sure what's gonna happen in the next year and a half, but if something comes along and you say, "We want to build this," and it doesn't fit within the ordinance. What our charter says is, yes, you can do that eventually. You can repeal or amend the ordinance if you have a majority in the city council. It's a little bit different from normal, you'd be a majority of the actual council rather than of a quorum. So you'd need three, but if you've got three people, you can repeal it, and you can do that anytime after the next regular municipal election. That's 2026 coming up. Additionally, you could send it to the people. Now, as I read it, that can happen at any time. There could be some question about whether that has to wait till 2026. I think we're gonna get into a proposal to clarify that later. But the key is that this really only ties your hands through 2026 if you were to adopt it. I gather, however, the council doesn't like that even. The council's worried, what if something comes along before that? And so I think that's where we're looking to see if we can have a compromise. We're a little hamstrung because we've tried to meet, and we've played tag back and forth on email and just not gotten that, and our time ran out. And so we haven't really heard from you what it is that, you know, would be convincing you. And I wish, hopefully, we'll still get to hear from that meeting, but if we don't, I'm gonna give you this presentation just in case. So, I've sort of already covered this. It's that we can do the compromise, but because it has any change in substance, which is pretty limited, has to pass through you tonight. This is kind of our last opportunity. I know we've got a couple of them, and just to sort of preview that, I believe Annette is gonna give you a proposal that sort of gets rid of this 95% figure on the theory that maybe that's what's causing it. I think Joe is gonna give you a proposal that will really make clear that, hey, you can go to an election if you want, but you don't have to go right away, you can go at the time of your choosing. And that could be useful because maybe at that point, there would be a real proposal that people would actually be discussing, not a hypothetical proposal. And the other thing about that is you could time it for a general election, and suddenly, that wouldn't cost $10,000. So that's a budget conscious thing. So my own proposal, which, I don't know if you, did you get a copy sent out, or would you like paper copies? I will, if I may approach. So the key on this proposal is basically, all right, you could do it, you could build this thing before 2026, but we would say, there needs to not be any major change to Eastside Park, and last, we've got that majority of the council, and you hold at least two public listening sessions. And if there's changes in between, you would hold a third one. And if there's more changes, you could hold a fourth one. But presumably, you're gonna have one listening session, you're gonna make your changes, you're gonna have another listening session, that's gonna be where you're at, you're at. And I've got a definition there in what a public listening session is, but the keys of what I'm trying to accomplish here is that it's a chance to present the project publicly. It's a time for people to ask questions and do a back and forth. And I think we've all realized that city council meetings, it's hard to do that back and forth, and it's hard to get people to really feel like, you know, they may ask a question, you may give an answer, but it's hard for them to follow up and feel like, no, they really understood what I was asking, and that answer really answered my question as opposed to just sort of a superficial thing. The idea is that it would be widely advertised in advance, and it could be done by the city if you're doing it, or if there's a contractor that's doing it, it'd be done by then. If there's somebody like NextGen, they could be doing it. And the key is, you know, you've all seen the Chrissy Dam project, right? They've had these informational meetings. I don't actually know the status of whether they're required to, or they just think it's good practice, but that's sort of what we're envisioning. And, you know, the advantage of it is it wouldn't take up your council meetings, but it would be a chance for the community to sort of get together. And frankly, I think if that had happened in this case, you know, I think we might have seen a different result. And I think most of the people here are sort of thinking, well, you know, we objected to where this project was. Maybe if you'd had this, frankly, it would've gone forward in Eastside Park. And I think the reason for that is, you know, people were upset about the proposal, but even more so, at least my sense, was people were upset that they weren't heard, that there wasn't a process they felt included in. And, you know, this is the sort of thing that I think would solve that. And I think I've gotten the sense even from people who've talked to NextGen people afterwards that, eh, in retrospect, maybe they think they should've done this, and just no one told them to. Well, this would be out here telling people to do that. You know, I think frankly, I've heard from people who used to be city managers say, oh, you know, probably would've said something like that. Well, it wouldn't have to be a city manager telling them, because, you know, city managers that come and they go, and people have a learning curve to learn all that information. So I think having this in there would guarantee a process where, you know, I think it would be healthier, we could have better communication, things would be friendlier. And so I think that's where I'm at. And, you know, I don't know, the way it looks on your faces make me think that I think I've made my points, but if anybody has any questions, either about the old ordinance or about this proposal, or anything about that, about, you know, what you're here to do tonight, or what, you know, I think Joe can answer some of those questions, but I'm happy to answer them too. And so I guess at this point, I'll throw it open to anybody. And if you don't have any questions now, I'm gonna stick around for the whole meeting.
Thanks, Jim. And I think, well, as you can see on our agenda, we have, under the other business portion of the meeting, we as a council will have a discussion, and I think many of the things that you're bringing forth right now, I'm sure the council will be taking those things under consideration and will be part of our discussion later. So I think that makes sense to everybody. We'll just move on. And Annette, thank you for your PowerPoint presentation, and I appreciate it.
Thank you for giving the time to hear it.
Yes. Annette?
So my name is Annette Watson. I live at 115 South Atlantic Avenue, and I want to speak in favor of the ordinance preservation of Eastside Park. Now, those of you in this room, you're not surprised that that's what I would be up here talking about, but I just want to keep things short and sweet. So I like the actual ordinance itself for two reasons, and that is because it has a measurement to follow and an enforcement clause in it. So even so, I like these things. I think this is exactly why the city council hasn't already said yes to the proposed ordinance, because you don't like the measurement to follow, which might hamper your creativity in the park in the future, and you don't like the enforcement because you think maybe one day there'll be some sort of litigation against the city. So in a negotiation, both sides can talk through what they cannot give up. Our door, the door of those who collected the Eastside Park signatures is open. The city, for its own reasons, has not scheduled a meeting with us, even though we have played email tag and showed up in person about scheduling a meeting. So I want to demonstrate to the town in good faith that I represent those who signed the document preservation of Eastside Park, and I am here to talk negotiation. For myself, I want the original proposed preservation of Eastside Park document to become ordinance, but I could live with this amended version. So I believe that those I represent would probably like this amendment as well. So my document, which is different from Jim's, addresses these negative concerns that the city has. In this version, my only measurement is that for new projects. It doesn't matter if it's green or not green, it's just a measurement. If the project is over a certain size, then a two-month cooling period is installed. As for enforcement, there's no mention of any five going to court included. It only replaces that enforcement with, in the way that the ordinance is repealed, and it's repealed by special election. So if you five talk with our five in person, we can make quick work of negotiation, if that's what you want, if you want to find some sort of middle ground with your constituents. So if you submit to us a proposal in writing, it would need to be in our hand on June 1st to meet the 10-day lawful requirement, and of course, the posting requirement is what Jim is talking about. After June 1st, we would literally have to meet in person to go quicker. So I support the original ordinance, but I am willing to talk, and the question is, are you? So you can examine this document in your own time, and maybe even tonight, but I will pass that out to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Let's see. Next up will be Joe. How are you?
Good evening.
Can you hear me? Sure can.
Okay. Joe Alea, 203 East Eighth Street. And if there's not any compromise for, none of the proposed amendments are satisfactory, what will happen is there'll be an election, you know, coming up, I think it would be either August 12 or November 4. And why have an election when there's not any proposal to think about? Like, why not have, if there's going to be a change to Eastside Park, why not have a vote where people would consider an actual proposal and then decide if the ordinance should be removed or not? Okay, so that's the essence of the amendment that I'm presenting. Another benefit to it that Jim mentioned is that if this coincides with the regular election, the thousands of dollars are saved. Okay, so, you know, I think that if there's still some reluctance, indecision about amending, you know, if nobody is really too enthusiastic about having an election coming up, a special election, so this would be an option that could put that off to a time when people could make a more informed decision and possibly save some money too. And so that's all I have.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Did they get copies for us?
Oh, yeah. I didn't make copies for everyone, so I could send it in email, should I?
Just want to maybe give it to Carolina, then she can maybe make copies for us, and then see that we get them. All right. Would there be anybody else that would like to approach the council? All right, hearing none. We shall move on. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move on to our reading and approval of our regular meeting minutes from May 13, 2025.
I will move approval of the regular minutes from our May 13, 25 regular meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the 5/13/2025 regular meeting minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have the condensed version of those same minutes from May 13, 2025.
I will move approval of the condensed version of the minutes from 5/13/25.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the 5/13/2025 condensed version of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have before us our consent agenda, and tonight, it consists of the audit of city bills, our gambling reports, Morris Public Library Board meeting minutes from 4/9 of 2025, and the City of Morris Park Board minutes from 5/5, 2025. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the items on the consent agenda, and I will bring it back to the city council for any discussion on any of the items listed on the on the agenda.
Line number 19, was that figured into the overall scope of the project?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
For those listening, that's line item 19 is for structural engineering at Wells Park in the amount of 2,500 RAC.
Just, yeah. Assumption being that that's for the concession and bathroom out there.
Very good, thank you. I just thought people in the listening audience would benefit from that. Any other discussion on any of your items on the consent agenda? See, they poured a cement pad over there along the, next to the stands on the Wells, be the South Field. Looks nice. Very nice. All right, well, if there's no other discussion, items on the consent agenda, we have, first, we have a motion and a second before us. We'll just do a voice vote on that. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item before us, we have, under petitions, requests, and communications, we have to we have to accept a donation from WCI River View Fund, and that is for, I believe, in the amount of $400 for music in the park. And if you remember, recall from last meeting, I mentioned that our chamber director has been working hard to try to book some events this year for the park, and we have, I believe, two in June, one in July so far, and she's trying to get one in August. So shout out to our chamber director, Sarah, for that. She's working hard, so.
I will move approval of accepting a donation from the WCI River View Fund in the amount of $400.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to accept the donation from WCI River View Fund in the amount of $400. Once again, we'll just do a voice vote on that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we have no ordinances and resolutions, so we can move through to our city manager's newsletter. I can read and just highlight some things, and I guess in her absence, and if there's any questions or whatever, I guess we'll have to see how that goes.
I just want to comment on the tree giveaway, so you don't even have to. It was, I got a tree, it was so well, I mean, it was just a great process, project, easy. Shout out to the tree board members and the city staff and all those people volunteered because it was really sweet, and it sounded like they got rid of most of the trees.
Most, most, there's, did not get rid of all of them, but with that, the ones that they didn't give away, we're gonna be a part of the tree planting, the city tree planting, which got rescheduled from last week to tonight because of all the rain that we got. So, and yeah, I heard the same thing, that it went extremely smooth, and it went, it was very well manned.
I didn't have to get out of my car, and those guys, that was that super cold weekend, and they stood there in their parkas and hats and mittens, and so nicely done to everybody who helped out. It was really, really well set up, really nice.
Yeah, I agree. I was actually there, helping with my rain gear on, and I think we gave away about 80 out of the 100 trees during that giveaway, and I did take one myself and planted it out at my mother's place, so, yeah, it was great. Junk hearings, I think we're still kind of moving through those. The public, round town stuff, the Public Works Department has sent out mowed properties, they're inspecting those, and they're kind of sending out letters for those that are unmoed, I guess would be the right way to say that. And just to note, all the bathrooms, of course, are on, and the splash pad is open. The tree planting, I went out there tonight prior to come into the meeting, and I had to have a photo op and read a proclamation, so I was out there, and there are plenty of people out there tonight, so I don't know if they're gonna get all of the trees put in the ground tonight, but they're sure gonna try. Let's see. Budget is kind of, that'll be starting in June, so we, that'll be forthcoming. Our next meeting, after the meeting on June 10th, we will be having a park tour with the park board, so just make a note of that. And then, gosh, I think I might have had a oversight on maybe an item we should have added to the agenda, because Becca had sent us out a correspondence that we're gonna have to take some action to move Tuesday's May 24 meeting to 7:15, and that's to accommodate that hearing at 3:00 PM, so. And that's to uh accommodate that hearing at three P, three, three PM, so.
Jim.
There, I mean, I'm sorry, in Tuesday, yeah, June twenty-fourth, right? We don't have to, do we have to do that today? Do we have to do that today, Joe, make that? She said something about moving the meeting during, no, that's, we got a couple hearings before that. I thought in her correspondence, she had communicated that we were supposed to do something with that, but.
Can you do it on June tenth, I think that's the, we can.
We still have, we can do that at the June ninth meeting?
Tenth.
Tenth.
Well, our next meeting is the ninth, isn't it, or am I wrong?
Tenth, you just read the tenth.
It's the tenth.
You're right, it is the tenth, yeah. Oh, I know what I had in my mind with the ninth thing, that was something different, sorry, my head was wrapped around something else. Yeah, you're right, it is the tenth.
I think we, I think we can, because that's, you'll have more than the allocated time and change for that in order to get it posted and it, and all that, so one would think that.
I think that's what she was concerned about, was that we'd have the proper notice, but. Anybody, can everybody, anybody recall what she said exactly? I thought that was something she, we were supposed to do tonight, but I, I might be wrong.
I thought it was informational.
I think just for us to reserve or keep that time slot open for us to.
Okay.
To have for the hearing at three, and then just plan on after that's done to go into our council meeting at a later timeframe.
Okay.
But I think we have to, would have to post that that council meeting will be at seven fifteen versus five fifteen.
On the tenth.
Correct.
Yeah, I think that gives us one.
No, thirteen, uh twenty.
It'll have to be posted after the tenth, but before our meeting and give the proper notice, so.
Correct. Okay, yeah, cause our meeting is on, yeah, about twenty-fourth, what she's talking about. Okay, got it, so we can still, I think we're still within our timeframe if we do it on the tenth, right? Don't you think, Joe? She gave us plenty of time to make that notification.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, that's all I needed to really clarify, I was a little bit back and forth on that, so, alright, good deal. Any other discussions on items on the city manager's newsletter? Okay. So what we'll do next is uh we'll turn it over to the council for any board updates that uh any of us may have on the respective boards. Hearing none. I really don't have much for my boards at all. It's uh, we'll kinda came and went, and uh be coming up shortly. Alright, well, hearing none, we shall move on to the other business portion of our meeting. And tonight, we have the present, preservation of Eastside Park proposed ordinance discussion. And I guess how I'd like to facilitate the discussion, uh to just start with the city council members, Zach, you, in fairness to Councilmember Gullison, so she doesn't always have to go first. We'll just swing it to Zach and swing it her way, and we'll end with my, with the mayor and see where it goes.
Yeah, that's fine, I, we spoke a little bit about this um at our work session.
I forget when that was, the twenty-ninth, maybe?
Excuse me, um this new information is, is great, obviously, I haven't had time to digest it or, or, or fully, you know, understand, obviously, um and that's okay, that's totally fine. Um my opinion stands from that work session that if, if we are going to sit down and negotiate, in my opinion, it should be full council that sits down to have that discussion. Um additionally, I do not want to, I have a hard time stomaching paying for a special election. With that said, I have, I have a lot of cons- I shouldn't say a lot, I have concerns about the proposed ordinance. And I will commend the preservation of Eastside Park group, Save Eastside Park? Wanna make sure that I, okay, Save Eastside Park, you, you followed the charter, you followed the rules, you got the signatures, and I commend you for that, because that is a lot of work. That, that's a lot of door knocking, that's a lot of work. Um the issue, the main issues that I have with the proposed ordinance are twofold. And that is, um whoever is, and, and obviously you talked about repeal, but whoever is sitting in this chair, two years, four years, eight, ten, whatever the number is, if this were to be passed, would have to repeal. And there's, and there's no guarantee that an appeal, repeal were to go through. Secondarily, there's no, to the best of my knowledge, there's no other piece of city property that has a defined usage. Everything has its place, right, but there's no mandate on something like the liquor store that says ninety-five percent of it, or, or fifty percent of it has to be parking lots or whatever. There's no other piece of government property that has that mandate. And I'm putting you on the spot, so you don't have to answer, but, but feel free to correct me if you know off the top.
I don't know off the top.
Yeah, and then, and then secondarily, I, I appreciate, I appreciate getting creative. And I appreciate creativity, especially in our boards. But I don't wanna hamstring the park board in the future with saying, if you have a project that's going to go larger than the five percent, whatever that square footage is, you have to give something back. That's my biggest concern, is hamstring a volunteer organization.
Okay, yeah, we're just having a discussion, so that's what this is all about, thanks, Zach, I appreciate it.
Go ahead.
On the proposed, there's no way I can agree with the things that are listed in there, I just don't, I think your, your hands are tied for your park board, the people that are there to help make a decision and make rest, uh recommendations to the council. Uh if, if it remained as that, I would say let's take it to the vote, as much as I don't want to, we're forced to take it to a vote if we don't agree with that, in my eyes. Uh some of the things that I've seen presented here tonight, I need to read through them better, and to get a copy of what Joe has presented also. But some of the stuff I see in Jim's, I think has potential, so just to read through and to sit down and figure it out. Uh if we can figure it out and use some common sense and informational meetings, so I, I think there's potential there. We just need to sit down as a group and retain the wisdom, the experience, the, the time spent by our park boards or tree boards, letting these people do the jobs and make the recommendation to a council. And yeah, if between the four council people and a mayor, you're unhappy with our decisions, every two years, two of us are up for election, as far as the council. Every four years, the mayor is up for election. So if, if you don't agree with the way we're doing things, that's the perfect time to, to make the change. But I think to keep our hands tied to the ninety-five percent and the five, I just cannot agree to those terms. And I guess I would have to say it'll go to a vote if that's what we have to do. But to look through and to see these other proposals, I think potentially we can make some adjustments.
I would have to concur with both Councilman Zach and Jeff, that I just think that allowing this ordinance, it, it just takes away from what, how, what the setup of our system is. And um you know, this whole time, for months, it's been the people have spoken, the people have spoken. And so, but now you're wanting, now the ordinance wants to compromise, and I just, if all those people signed the ordinance as is, now you're deciding to compromise it and come up with a different ordinance. And the, I mean, I think there's been some great lessons learned in this, going forward, I, you know, that the council and can look at those and, and look, look at that as lessons learned and how this could go in the future. But to have a spe- it's a separate ordinance restricting Eastside Park, what can go in there, what can't. Um I would say then let the people vote, the whole people, the whole city of Morris. And that's kinda where I stand on it. I'll, I'll read through this, I appreciate all the work that everybody's done, um but I, yeah. And the fact that we have had a lot of people discuss too about campaigns and reelections, that's not why I'm up here, is for reelection. I don't care, that's fine. Um but you know, that's been a, a vocal point, including an email from a person that's not even in the city of Morris, saying that that'll maybe be a matter of a public record if a campaign that may follow, so I, I don't, yeah. I don't appreciate that, cause that's not why I sit up here, is to make concessions and compromises for reelection. I, I don't do that, I, that's not who I am, so um whether it's a special election, a general election, I guess then, then if the people in that election say, this is how we want Eastside Park to be, then we'll know, and then it, then it's fine. And then we know how to proceed from there.
Okay, well, thanks for sharing, council. Um I've given this a lot of thought, and I, I thought the best way for me to communicate my position, I'm just gonna read a prepared statement that I put together. Um according to Minnesota Statute, uh four twelve, uh dot one nine one, uh only the city council has the power to enact ordinances. Now, keep in mind, this is a state statute. State statute does not authorize the council to seek voter consent, that's state statute. Home rule charter cities do provide for provisions to seek voter approval or conduct elections on a particular ordinance. It's a good example of how statutory cities and home rule charter cities differ. Our city charter grants the powers of recall, initiative and referendum, one of which is being exercised in the ordinance before us today. We've been discussing the future of Eastside Park for several months now. Through the efforts of the Gen Two Committee, we discovered a need for ha- for more handicapped accessible equipment at Eastside Park. We've also learned that this type of equipment requires a specific material to accommodate this type of equipment. The proposed ordinance before the city council does not allow for expansion as defined in subparagraph two B under green space and subparagraph three, I, I mean, subparagraph two B is under the expansion portion there, and subparagraph two B is the green space, where you define what green space is, if I'm understanding this correctly, is of the equipment that would need to meet, um of equipment that we would need for children with disabilities. So the pro- ordinance, the proposed ordinance before the city council does not allow for uh us, as defined by those two items of equipment that would meet the needs of children with disabilities. There, I said it, sorry, stumbled a bit there. This ordinance, as it is written, essentially would restrict our ability to address this need. We are committed to accommodate children with disabilities. Knowing that we have until June tenth to make a final decision on this proposed ordinance, my recommendation is to consider amending the current ordinance to allow for installation of handicap park equipment in the future. At our last meeting, Councilmember Solby felt we should put it to a vote of the people. My thought is, the people have already voted, they voted when they elected us into these positions. Our charge is to make decisions for the betterment of the city. As was uh mentioned earlier by Jim, we have three choices before us. We either approve or we deny the ordinance as it is written, we amend the ordinance, and then it, of course, must be reintroduced, and then notice given, or we put it to a special vote of the public. Those are really the three things that we have to consider tonight, well, at least one of them we have to do, consider tonight. I would like the city council to consider a few things before our final decision is made. Uh it was mentioned earlier about the money, where's it gonna come from? I too had a concern, where's the money gonna come from for a special election? We have no money budgeted for this expense, as you all know. City Manager Shrupp informed me that money would come from our general fund as an unallocated line item. And Whitney, you're here, you can correct me if I'm misstating anything. If the unallocated funds are used up, it will then come out of our reserves, which we currently have approximately fifty thousand or so in our reserve fund. Does that sound about right, Wit?
We have, we have more than that, but yeah, there's a, always every year, there's some um budgeted and unallocated within the general fund that would cover the special election cost.
Okay. The cost of that special election, there's been a figure thrown out of about ten grand. Um my concern is this, uh the future of LGA is really hanging in the lurch as we speak. There's a fo- uh a proposed three point one percent reduction to our local government aid, working its way through the Minnesota Legislature as we speak. This would reduce Morris's allocation by eighty-three thousand eight hundred ninety-two dollars. My question is, do we wanna draw down our reserve fund, given the current state of LGA? While I respect the park board's recommendation to send it to a vote, we have a responsibility to the taxpayers to spend their money wisely. Is this the best use of taxpayers' money? Ten thousand dollars would go a long way in purchasing additional handicap accessible park equipment. We could discuss the ninety-five percent figure, however, if I understand it correctly, the remaining five percent, I know the square footage was put out, you said about thirty-two hundred or something square foot, or thereabouts, um is equivalent to the area currently occupied by the existing band shelter. That amount of space, in my view, would still allow for adding additional uh equipment of that nature. So taking into account the dollar amount of a special election and the uncertainty of LGA, I would like, well, I would like the council to entertain a motion. And the motion that I am considering uh is to approve the Eastside Park ordinance with the removal of all the language to allow for installation of handicap accessible playground equipment in the future. Though it just restricts, I think in my mind, the, our ability to add that type of equipment, cause unless I'm really missing something, um it sounded to me like all through the um, the Gen Two's presentations, uh that need really kinda came up front to me. And I think most peo- there was several people that I can remember that mentioned that that was a really strong need and um, or a really big ask, that they were looking for it in a, in a park, in a destination park project that they were proposing. So I guess I could make that motion, we could take action on that particular motion if it fails. Knowing that we have, really, if we're gonna amend that ordinance, it has to be done tonight. So we either, I can bring it to the council to make that motion, you can take action on it or not, so I guess I'll just make that motion. Um I think the motion, the amended ordinance in that motion, it really accomplishes two things. It allows for future expansion of handicap accessible park equipment, while it still preserves the green space integrity of Eastside Park. That was just my thoughts that I kinda gathered today. Um I can just, I'll make that motion, and I'll just bring it back to the uh city council for discussion, and we'll just see where that goes. If it doesn't go anywhere, then we, I guess we know where we're heading. Joe, does that sound acceptable?
Uh I.
Or what do you think?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we spoke about this a little earlier today, and if I'm understanding correctly, your motion is to uh remove um, under subdivision two B, remove uh, keep the first sentence, but uh uh remove everything else there in, in paragraph B, so that's two sentences that would be removed. And then subdivision three regarding existing. three regarding existing structures, uh, would, would simply be removed. Is that correct?
That's, that's, I think that sums it up, Joe. You know, I just think that, you know, we are obligated as a city to accommodate, uh, handicapped accessible, uh, children with disabilities. And I just think the ordinance as it's written restricts us, uh, to that end. And I personally, as far as the ninety-five percent figure goes, um, I'm not as concerned about that as, um, maybe some of the rest of the council may be, but, um, that was concerning to me because, um, just for the reasons that I stated. So, I'll just bring it back. I'll make that motion and then, uh, so that's for, I guess, a motion. And then I'll just bring it back to the council for action on that motion. We'll just see how that, where that ha- where that goes.
Kevin, can I ask you what the motion is?
Okay, I'll ma- I'll read it again. "I make a motion to approve the East Side Park ordinance with the removal of language in order to allow installation of handicapped accessible playground equipment in the future." Period.
I think we're just, look, what's the language that's being removed? Is, is it-
Well-
two B and three?
Yeah.
Uh, all, subdivision three is removed, uh, subdivision two B, uh, the first sentence remains, the remainder of that, uh, is removed.
I cannot support that with a ninety-five percent green space number and the five people being able to take and stop it. I just, as that reads, I would not support it. I'm, I think with some of the other stuff we've had presented to us tonight, that's more general, just informing and making some announcements to people. If that's agreeable and to, to see what Joe's copy was, to sit down and look at that, but just as that reads, I cannot support that. Subdivision three says existing structures may remain and we're gonna eliminate that? Am I reading that wrong? I mean, what does that have to do with us allowing handicapped equipment to come in by attaching that?
When it talks to, really, the placement of new pavement, cement, rubber or fencing is an expansion, unless it involves only a de-minimus amount of material required for the repair, replacement, restoration. That is actually speaking to, if I understand it correctly, um, well, that's new equipment. So, they're, they're talking about that type of equipment that you could possibly put in there. So, there's language in there that speaks to that and it's, if we didn't learn anything, I think we know what type of material is gonna be required to make this equipment handicapped accessible. So, all of subparagraph three, uh, may not need to be removed, but I just think there's language in there that, uh, is just not gonna allow us if, in the future, if we did wanna add some handicapped accessible equipment there. So, I don't know if I'm missing, that's, that's just the way I'm interpreting it, but, um, you know, and maybe we, if there is a compromise that we can work out tonight, that would be great. That would be my, my recommendation. If it's lowering that green space number to ninety percent, whatever it is, we can certainly throw that out and, and see. We have the people here right now. Um, I think we could, maybe if you wanna add to my motion or, uh, we could, I could revise it, I could reword it, whatever. But I just thought I would kickstart this discussion with that motion. That was my whole intent of this. And we've had a difficult time trying to get together as a group, as you know. Um, so I just thought, you're here, they're here, maybe we can work something out. I don't know. I'm not trying to pressure the council, obviously, you know. I'm just trying, we are, if we are gonna make any kind of amendment changes, and I don't mean to put you on the spot by any means. I respect all of the city council's positions on this, but I do think that in, to be, in being fiscally responsible to our taxpayers, if we can spend a few minutes, put our heads together and perhaps we can come up with a solution and kinda put this thing to bed, is my thought. Uh, Annette?
So, um, I called my husband to bring in Joe's so that could bring it up, we'll read it in just a moment here. Uh, but the ninety-five percent that is removed from mine, but the replacement is, instead of saying ninety-five percent, replacement is a structure when you want to do something that's a large, um, act. So, ninety-five percent is removed, but instead you're looking at basically a two-month delay so that people have time to think about what's going on in East Side Park. If it's a large improvement.
Well, and I like the idea, Jim, that you had about listening sessions and so forth. And as you know, um, we, uh, we, I did call a public hearing to give people a voice several months ago, and public hearings are also available to us too. And, um, so I think before any, I think if we haven't learned anything from this whole experience that, um, you know, we can be a little more open and probably entertain things earlier on in a process. So, this was a, this development, as you know, was a little different for our park system. And I do, if there's, if there's park board members out there listening, I, I, I just want to make sure they understand that I do respect their position and all of the hard work that they've done. And I don't wanna undermine their position here at all. I know there, there are some of the members, I don't know if it was a consensus, I wasn't at that meeting, but it sounded like they were generally moving and more in favor of sending it to a vote. But, um, in light of being fiscally responsible and we are the decision makers here in our city, um, we deal with ordinances and rel- resolutions all the time. That's what we do. That's what the city council does. So, in my mind, I mean, as important as this is, um, to everybody, I just think it's time that we make some decisions here.
Jim, the copy you have, is that what you're proposing for, the whole new ordinance? Or is that just, for just subdivision one?
So, um, I think it says subdivision one, subdivision two, right?
Okay.
So, um, uh, may I speak?
Yes, you can approach, Council.
So, yeah, that, what you see before you is the entirety of it. Um, I obviously did a bunch of different drafts that I shared around with, uh, that. And so, um, there's that version which just says, "Big change," and that's all it says, and then that's the, then the next part is the safety valve, if you want to do a big change. I do have a version that I could provide you that does keep everything, uh, with the ninety-five and then says that same language about a safety valve. But I gathered that you guys didn't like to see ninety-five percent in there. Um, this is a little looser, it's a little vaguer. Um, that might be good, that might be bad from your perspective, but this does sort of cut straight to the chase. If there's a big change, you have to have a listening session. And that's all there is to it.
If this is the complete proposed ordinance, I could work with what Jim has presented to us tonight.
I'm not, I'm still not sure why we need an ordinance for this. Isn't that, I mean, again, in five years, this could be a whole new group of people here. What, it should be just a practice. Like I said, we've learned. I certainly don't wanna go through lots of this again.
People are, have, are the people in five years gonna know?
Well, are the people who are proposing the ordinance in five, ten years, is that, are they gonna be around? I, I mean, it's, it goes both ways. It's, you know, I, and then the, or again, you're changing the ordinance that you've gotten the votes for. Um, the people that you were representing, the people that you asked to sign that ordinance, now it's being changed. So, um, I guess that's, I guess that's why I'm at, is like, I don't know why we need an ordinance to help guide, guide us in a decision. As you said, Mayor, we are elected to make these decisions.
Correct. Joey, would you like to speak to her comment at all?
Well, you know, I don't, um, I, I'm, I'm trying not to state, you know, as your attorney, I represent the whole city council.
Yep.
I don't wanna state like a preference for, uh, any particular ordinance or whether there's an ordinance or not. Uh, you, you know, I, I can tell you basically what, uh, what the proposals say and what they would mean. Um, so-
But beyond that?
But yeah, you know, for the-
Yeah.
Yeah, for the issue of-
Yeah.
The future philosophy of how, how this might, uh, work with the city governance. I, I can't get into that too much, I guess.
Yeah, no, I wasn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that either, Joe. And I, I'm not trying to make you make our decision for us. That's not what my question was. But, you know, at the end of the day, we, uh, I think we can all, I can safely, I safely feel that this, something like this will never happen again, at least in my, in my estimation. As long as I've been on in the council and then now, of course, as your mayor, for over, well over ten years, we've never had anything like this happen before. But obviously, it's something brought us to this point. And our home rule charter does allow for people like, that are sitting in those seats to have this, uh, ability to call, uh, for an ordinance change and put a per- put a ordinance into, into position. So, it's their right. I mean, I'm certainly not gonna take that away from them. Our, our forefathers that created our charter did it for a reason. And we're actually lucky that we have, you know, this, uh, those powers in our charter because statutory cities do not. You're solely at the mercy of the state statute. So, um, in my estimation, Kim, to answer your question, that's, that's why I think that ordinance is before us and why we should at least consider it. So, we can eliminate maybe the possibility of something like this happening again for future leaders. You know, I agree with you a hundred percent. I don't ever, I hope, not only do I not wanna go through it, but I hope nobody else ever has to deal with something like this again for the people that are sitting here in the future.
I, I could ask Jim something. I mean, so Jim, this is looking like, essentially, you need a project plan, you need the listening sessions, quote, is what it boils down to.
Yeah, I, uh, sorry, microphone. Uh, yeah, the idea is that sometime, uh, thirty days before the council acts, it's, could be far in advance, there has to be a less, a listening session and then a second listening session. And I think the idea is, you know, certainly in this project, we heard after it was adopted, you know, they said, "Well, we're considering changes. We're considering changes." Well, this'd be a way to consider the changes. You have your second listening session. Hopefully by then, you've considered all the changes. Um, if they, you know, if the person keeps wanting to make changes after that, you could have another listening session. Uh, that's the idea behind it. But yeah, the idea is that normally you'd have two listening sessions and, um, the notice requirements for it say it's gotta be talked about at two city council meetings, which basically means you, you could have one a month.
You know, and again, I don't know where you're at with the removal of that language. I mean, that was my motion and one way or the other, the city council will have to take action on that before we leave tonight because there is a motion on the table. Whether it gets passed or not, that's, it's not gonna ruin my life. I just, uh, more or less wanted to express myself through a motion and, but I just wanted to know about the rubber, all that materials and stuff, if that's negotiable or if that's not a negotiable item.
I mean, I, when I look at it, it's sort of a statement against interest, but when I look at that, I don't see that that really makes a substantive change to remove that language. Um, green space would still mean trees, shrubs-
Yes.
-grass and other vegetation.
Period.
A court would look at that and by implication figure anything that's not that is, is not green space. Um, and as to subdivision three, subdivision three is actually really to give you more ability to construct.
Well, the, the one really bullet point, or the, the statement that really bothers me more than any is, or any other artificial material. Well, any other artificial material, that encompasses a lot of things. So, basically, it's saying that you can't really do anything. Cause I mean, if you look at the matting that was proposed in the, in the equipment in the last proposal, all those things, they're all artificial. They're certainly not handmade.
I mean, to answer your question, if, if that's what happens, I'm gonna turn to those people and say, uh, "That shouldn't be the hill you die on." Um, but I wanna be candid with you in saying, um, I don't think it's a major change to the ordinance-
Okay.
-to do what you suggest.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, in this proposed ordinance then, there's no subdivision three, four, or five? Or these are just the-
There's no subdivision three, four, or five. I mean, that, even one you have before the question. That's, that's all there is to it.
And then also then, um, if we, if this is followed with public listening sessions?
You get to do whatever you want.
And then after that, there is no, I mean, what's the recourse if a group of people decide they don't like the actions that were taken still?
I mean, technically speaking, the, well, technically speaking, you don't need it in an ordinance. People, someone could've, could've brought city to court, even without an ordinance.
Yeah, someone can go to court and say, "There weren't those listening sessions." That's all they could say.
Because they've, I mean, but as long as the listening sessions happen-
Then that's it.
Then that's it.
And I think after going through what we've gone through, that's been the big, big thing is, we need to have communication to let people know what's going on, to hear this, what's, what's happening. And I think this basically says we're gonna have the listening sessions and I, I can, I can live with this as proposed in its entirety right here with the proposal that Jim presented for us.
Now, now, the one question I would have, again, you're, you're vague and it's probably on intentional, under except, under subdivision two exception, the first three words there, "No major change." What qualifies as a major change, right? And that's, that's intentional, right?
Who qualifies as a major?
Yep. The one thing that I wanna point out is, back in, I believe it was January, when we went to vote on, uh, on the park project, playground project for East Side Park, the same four people were sitting here and we had two, one, and an abstain, which is partially why, and I, I hold firm to this statement, that we need a full council to vote.
Well, I think we already kinda know where Councilmember Solby, uh, stands because he communicated that at his last, their last meeting.
But he has to see, those assumptions are dangerous. Assumptions all the way around are dangerous. And we hear that all the time.
Well, we, we, we-
So, we can't assume how anybody's gonna vote or what the cost of anything is or-
Yeah.
Well, we, I assume everyone's available on the tenth, right?
Right now, you're, you don't get to vote on this tonight. You only get to vote on whether you get to consider it on the tenth. So, that's the only thing before you is, do you consider this language on the tenth?
The amended-
Yeah.
-ordinance. We take action then.
If you say we're not considering it on the tenth, then it's dead. If you say we'll consider it on the tenth, then it's alive. And Councilman Solby can get that meeting and can express it.
And so that, you know, it will be within the deadline and all that good stuff. Okay.
Yeah, I-
That was my, I thought we had to take action tonight.
You have time to do it on the tenth.
And if we have a work session between now and the tenth to, for us to sit down, us five and hash it amongst ourselves and figure it out?
Joe, would you like to approach, Council? Go ahead, come on up.
Okay, so, yeah, um, uh, I'm stepping back a little bit to where the discussion was about ten minutes ago. I, I have no concept of time. You can hear me, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's just a mic.
Yeah, I, I, I first wanna say that, uh, Kevin's idea is very much like what I imagined when I first heard about the, the park project. And my response to that was, "Wow, that sounds great." So, uh, unless I'm misunderstanding, uh, what the mayor is saying, uh, I think that, uh, the ordinance as it is and all of the amended versions of it would allow for what you're describing.
Okay.
Because, uh, uh, firstly, when it says wood chips, you know, when it says rubber surfaces, wood chips, et cetera, that means that the current playground with the wood chips is, uh, you know, being described by, you know, that, uh, is it, is it two B?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So, uh, within that, that, you know, there could be the, uh, the rubber surface that would be put in- So, uh, within that, that, you know, there could be the, uh, uh, the rubber surface that would be put in, uh, and it could be that entire area, and that would not even use the five percent that would be in question. Uh, so in, in addition to that, if the, if the current wood-chipped playground were to remain as it is, there would be an area, which would be about the same area as the, the band shell, where the, you know, rubber surface and, uh, uh, accessible equipment would be put in. So I, I, I-
So that is an allowable use, if you're not under new construction?
Yeah, so, anything that exists right now, you could tear it down, and that square footage does not count toward the five percent. It's already included in the numbers that can, you can resurface it and keep all of the, resurface the, it as, for a wheelchair and not be in violation or even add any of the five percent.
Okay, that clarifies things, and so, in other words, that five percent that we retain, remaining, we could use those types of materials to put handicapped accessible equipment. Okay, well then my motion probably kinda falls flat on its face, for the most part.
And then, just, just for numbers, 'cause the park board, they saw the numbers in the map, and, and looked at it with more, for a pulley, but I think that when you do the map, the difference between what they, what was presented by NextGen and the maximum that we're allowing is a reduction of nine thousand square feet. That's what we're talking about, a reduction of nine thousand square feet.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was just, when I originally made that motion, that was my big concern, was that it would really restrict our ability to put in handicapped accessible equipment in the future, but it appears that I was probably wrong in my summation of the, my interpretation of that wordage, Joe, I don't know.
Uh, it can, um, yeah, it can be, I, I think you've got about the same abilities either way.
Yep.
So do we have to act on your proposal?
If it doesn't get a second, the motion's dead.
We just have to go through and see if there's a second, or?
Yeah, if there is, there isn't, if there is, there is, and we can vote on it, if there isn't a second, the motion will fail for lack of a second, so that's really where we're at. If there's no second, that one fails, and then we can move on and consider something else, I'm okay with that. If that's what the council is feeling. I certainly don't wanna put wordage in your mouth.
Well, out of everything I've seen, the one as suggested by Jim with the listing would be an option. Either that or going to a vote, in my mind, but I think we need to sit down as a group and have a, a work session and discuss between the tenth, now and the tenth, and with everybody.
It has to be soon, I'm on vacation, I'll next week. So-
I'm taking off Friday morning, gonna be gone for the weekend, but-
So that means we got from now until Thursday to do something?
Well, I'll be around on the second.
I can leave that work.
Which we couldn't do Thursday, because you, full quorum, you have to post.
Yeah, right.
How about Monday, June second?
I could make that work.
I can make that work too. Monday, June second?
Depends on the time.
Later?
I could make anywhere from five in the morning till midnight.
I can't do that after work, without Monday.
What time are you thinking about it?
Well, I shouldn't say that, I could do after work.
What time?
It'd have to be like six-thirty?
Probably better than that.
So Monday, the second. What time again?
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty? I'm okay with that.
Do, do we want a motion to that effect for setup?
Work session?
Work session, which is that, you know, would be the same as a special meeting for for purposes of statute.
Well, let's see, we can't make decisions though in that work session, if we call it a work session, correct?
But we can discuss amongst ourselves and figure out, and look at our different options, and have all five people there.
So we can take action at our-
On the tenth.
On the tenth, yep, okay. Yep, that makes sense, I'm okay with that. Work session, June second then, at six-thirty? Alright?
Motion to-
I'll make a motion to have a, conduct a work session Monday, June second, at six-thirty, to discuss the proposed ordinances as they were presented before us tonight for Eastside, preservation of Eastside, Eastside Park.
I will second that.
Okay, we'll have just a voice vote on that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carries. I suppose we should've took action on my proposed ordinance, but I guess I could probably safely say that-
There's no seconds, so we can vote aye.
Yeah, no seconds, so that motion failed, so we, we, we killed that one, alright? Very good. Very good discussion, I appreciate everybody's, uh, input, yeah, it's good to have a little dialogue. Uh, let's see, getting back, is there any other discussion on this before we move on? Alright, are there any other informational items to come before the council? Hearing, none?